Hello and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Portland Voter Forum for candidates for election to the office of Multnomah County Commission District One. I am Linda Mather, the moderator for this forum. District One of Multnomah County Commission is comprised of the county west of the Willamette River, plus the central east side and the Selwood Eastmoreland areas east of the river. The League is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to making democracy work. We believe democracy works best when voters are informed about issues and engaged in their communities. We are presenting this forum to give eligible voters the opportunity to learn more about the candidates. We are grateful for the support from the Carroll and Velma Sailing Foundation, the Weiss Foundation, the League of Women Voters of Portland Education Fund, and our media partner, Metro East Community Media. The candidates for this forum are the top two finishers for the office from the primary election earlier this year, and they are Megan Moyer and Vadim Wazorsky. We welcome both of you and thank you for participating. Under the voter forum proceeds, proceeds, procedures, we have agreed in writing before with the candidates that each will have a one-minute opening statement, followed by questions that have been prepared based upon League positions and League members' interest. Each candidate will be allowed a one-minute closing. Each speaker will have up to one minute to answer each question. The initial order of speakers here is determined by the Oregon Secretary of State Random Alphabet for the election. The candidate giving the first opening statement will give the first closing statement. And I think we're ready to begin, so Megan, would you start us off with your opening statement, please?
Hi, I'm Megan Moyer and I'm running for Multnomah County Commission. I was born in Salem, Oregon, and I've spent the last 20 years here in Portland, Oregon. I've spent my career building things. One, as a contractor, building housing, including low-income housing, and the other, as a policy expert, working to make sure that our government effectively serves those most vulnerable. I'm running for Multnomah County because I'm frustrated. I feel like we have not been effective the last five years in addressing the crisis of homelessness and untreated mental health and addiction. I'm running because I know that we can do better, but we need people in office who know how to build functional systems that can deliver those services in an affordable and accountable way. And that's the type of work that I have been doing. I've worked to design Oregon's long-term care system to provide services to seniors and people with disabilities with an emphasis on providing those services in people's homes. I want to make sure that we are helping people be successful in our community.
Thank you. Good. And Vadim, would you start us off with your opening?
Thank you, Linda, and thank everybody listening to this. It's a very important election because Multnomah County is at an inflection point. We have a lot of green shoots coming up. We have Music Portland playing free concerts in downtown. We had the Foo Fighters bring in 30,000 people to Goose Hollow. Old Town is developing a wondrous art district. We'll have a new Keller Auditorium or a PSU Auditorium downtown, and a new Omsi area that's going to bring a lot of visitors to the area. But first, before Portland and Multnomah County can recover, we need to end all the crises that we've been jumping from. We've had a housing emergency, a homelessness crisis, a spike in murders and other crimes, a methamphetamine crisis, and now a fentanyl emergency. I worked as an administrative law judge. I'm a lawyer. I worked for Medicare and Social Security overseeing national policies and managing offices that have had expenditures of over $500 million. I'm a volunteer. I talk to people all the time throughout Portland, whether through neighborhood associations or otherwise. And so I'm here to stop the chaos and bring a period of pragmatic calm by having a more efficient and honest government. Thank you.
Okay, let's get started with questions. And Megan, you're going to start us with the first one. If elected, what is the single most important goal you would hope to accomplish as a county commissioner?
My goal is to build a functional Medicaid-backed behavioral health system. Right now, we don't have one in the lower county or anywhere in Oregon. So that means that services are very disconnected and are one-off. They're not part of a system that helps people become stable and remain stable long-term. And I really feel like we cannot wait any longer before we are able to finally serve people where they're at with the right service without waiting days or months, and that is my number-one priority.
Thank you. And Vadim, your first priority?
My first priority is to end homelessness and the drug addiction and mental illness crisis that are causing a lot of people to suffer on the streets. You know, my family came to the United States as refugees from the Ukraine when it was still, from Ukraine when it was still in the Soviet Union. And I know what it's like to need some help. A lot of people helped us along the way. A lot of people need help in Portland. Unfortunately, our policies are wrong. We have plenty of money. Don't let anybody tell you we need more money for services. There's plenty of money. We just need to be able to have better planning in order to get people the help that they need and also make sure our neighborhoods are safe and thriving. And so my plan is fairly straightforward. Build out shelter beds, enforce our laws, get people off the streets and into the shelters where they will receive the help that they need.
Okay, and continue. Vadim, for the second question. What role, if any, do you think Multnomah County should play in addressing income inequality in the county?
I think it has a great role to play in that. What we're seeing right now is people not being able to afford to live where they work. And Multnomah County can approach that in several ways. We want to make sure that the way that we build affordable housing makes sense. A lot of the money that's being used for homeless services now might, over the next year, be actually diverted to affordable housing. And that right there will save people money if we do it right. Right now, we're building housing at $1,200, $1,300 a square foot. Affordable housing, that's $700,000 sometimes for one unit, where we can buy affordable housing for a little over $100,000 per unit that's already available. And so we need to make sure that we're using our money wisely so that people that live and work here are able to thrive and make sure that their kids are able to go to school and go to college.
Thank you. And Megan, your take on income inequality?
Yeah, I do think the county has a role to play, particularly with the services that the county delivers. The county is the local government that delivers our social safety net. And we have to make sure that we continue to deliver on those promises, like making sure that we provide long-term care for seniors and people with disabilities or providing basic health care through Multnomah County's health clinics. And particularly, we need to make sure that Multnomah County continues to be a place where families can raise their children. One of the programs that I'm excited for it to grow and expand is preschool for all. When we are able to give free preschool to every child in Multnomah County, it will be a game changer for families. I have a three-year-old. I just started paying for preschool this fall, and I pay $1,800 a month. That is more than my mortgage. And, you know, I'm not alone. This is a huge financial burden. And if Multnomah County can start to alleviate some of the significant challenges facing working in middle-class families and allow them to stay here, particularly issues like housing and childcare, it will be a more equitable community.
Okay, thank you. And you're going to start us on the next one. Please comment on any actions you would consider to address concerns, finally get to the question, related to the critical energy infrastructure hub on the Willamette River.
Yeah, this is a crisis, and it is a disaster waiting to happen. We have all the information we need to know how horrific both an environmental and health crisis we would have if an earthquake were to hit our region and frankly destroy many of the old tanks that store very serious chemicals. I support risk bonding. I support making sure that we are upgrading the infrastructure and making difficult decisions about what is and is not appropriate to have on our waterfront. It is a hard mix to make sure that we still have industrial space, but we have to start prioritizing what could be a health disaster and upgrade many, upgrade many of those facilities.
Okay, thank you. And Vadim, it's the critical energy infrastructure hub on the Willamette River.
And this is where the experience comes in, because I've already been working on these issues. I've been out to the Lytton neighborhood and talked to their neighborhood association. I have actually had my neighborhood association in Goose Hollow sign a series of letters calling for our government to ensure that the critical infrastructure is updated, that funding is available in case something horrific happens to repair the damage, and that planning is in place. I've worked with the Pearl neighborhood to have similar concerns met there and similar letters signed from their neighborhood association. We're working together to help the Lytton neighborhood ensure that their homes, that their families are safe in case something happens, and if the horrific happens, that there's a plan in place.
Thank you. You are watching the video of the voter forum of the League of Women Voters of Portland or listening to our podcast. These are for the candidates for the first district of Multnomah County Commission. And let's continue now with Vadim for another question. What role would you support for Multnomah County to play in addressing the supply of housing in the region?
Thank you very much. So there's two things there. One is how do we best utilize the money? And probably before the voters next year, there'll be a measure in which we take some of the services that we have for homelessness and use that money toward building out housing. Now, that, that's, there's a good reason for that, because we're not actually utilizing all the money that we have from the SHS taxes. But more than that, and I touched upon this earlier, we have to have accountability. As a lawyer, as a judge, I will ensure that we get accountability and that we use the money wisely. If you walk downtown, there's the Joyce Hotel, which was converted at over $1,200 a square foot to low-cost housing. You talk to any developer, we can build low-cost housing, brand-new, for $300 a square foot. We could have had four units for the price of one unit downtown. So I will ensure we build out quickly, rationally, and ways in which your tax money is being spent to good use so that people can actually live in those units and not have to wait.
And Megan, supply of housing?
The county needs to play an important role, particularly with our communities that are experiencing some significant barriers to long-term housing. Not everybody is ready for a one-bedroom apartment. And we, as the county who deliver services, need to be able to build specific housing for people experiencing severe mental illness, people experiencing substance use disorder, sober housing. The type of housing that I think the county needs to be pointing on is housing with services. And that can look like a lot of different things. That can include residential settings. That can include just having additional specialty staff around to make sure that people are having service coordination. But the county really needs to be responsible for providing housing for individuals who are experiencing all types of disabilities. And to me, that is a totally unmet need. You know, I built housing. I was a contractor. I also worked for a multinational contractor as a project manager. We need to be smart, and we need to get projects in line and finished quickly.
Thank you. And you're going to start us on this question. What, if any, changes in the county's policy concerning addiction treatment and recovery would you support?
Well, I mean, it's hard to call it a policy, because we don't have a functional system. Right now, we don't even have a diversion center set up, even though laws went in place that required either charging somebody or diverting them. So when we have a diversion center online, which we're supposed to have this month, what are we diverting people to? We don't have a functional treatment system. People are waiting dates to get into detox. People wait weeks to get into inpatient. We do not nearly have enough slots in intensive outpatient treatment. Multnomah County has to take the lead. We are the local mental health authority. We must expand treatment so that when somebody is ready at diversion to say yes, there's treatment available within hours.
And Vadim?
So there's obviously a breakdown in the way that our county government is addressing these issues. Now, I've actually been out there, once again, experience matters, advocating to the county commission about possible solutions. I was at the Buckman neighborhood, talking with the residents over there about the deflection center, and advocated common sense deflection programs that are used by and advocated by the US Department of Health and Human Services that we're not using here in Multnomah County to get people into treatment. We need detox beds, and there are places that can build out quickly, including our very own sheriff's department that has 40 individuals working there that are experienced with detox, where we can get people voluntarily into programs quickly. Our county is now doing that. Transitional housing. We need to work with private organizations to build out transitional housing. There was an organization that had office space not being used, and they asked the county for $7 million to build out 80 beds within that office space for transitional housing for people with mental illness and drug addiction, and the county said no. We have to change the way we're doing things. Be practical, get things done, rather than keep on holding meetings and keep on saying no. Let's say yes.
Okay, and start us on this question, if you would. What, if any, weight should voters give the number of candidates' financial supporters, the identities of these donors, and the amount of their average contributions?
I think all of that should be weighed in. You know, last I checked, I had the most number of individual donors. And I think that's important, because it's organization. It's how you actually reach out to the public. It's how you talk to people. It's the outreach that you have, and that's all very important. The number, the amount of donations, I don't know how you weigh that, but I think it's indicative of how well you run your campaign. And people will look at, you know, certainly several things. They'll look at the number of donations. They'll look at the endorsements, and then they'll look at the policies and what your actually, what your actual experience is. And I'm a leading candidate on all those fields.
Thank you. Megan, about donors?
You know, I believe in transparency. I have no problem people looking at who's donated to me and how much. You know, I definitely think there is a difference in access to wealth, and that's fine. You know, I definitely have spent my career working largely in labor movement or nonprofits and currently as Public Policy Director at Disability Rights Oregon, so that's not a particularly affluent group of coworkers. But I'm really thrilled with the people who have chosen to invest in my campaign. You know, I'm also very proud of my endorsements. I certainly would recommend people look at that as well. And, you know, I think there's something to be said about, you know, that I got 40%, 47% of the votes to Mr. Wazorsky's 40, even though he outspent me 5 to 1. So, you know, I think, please look at it. Look at us in our totality. And I think, I think our support speaks for itself.
Okay, thank you, Megan. And you're going to start us on. What ideas for addressing the homelessness crisis in the county do you think show particular promise?
Well, you know, I was surprised, honestly. I wasn't sure how successful some of the tiny villages would be. You know, because that's not something that I've seen a lot of data around. But I have been converted to believing that that is actually a pretty effective intervention. And I say that because of not only the fact that there is a high demand and people seem very interested in living in a tiny village where they're not as interested in going into a congregate shelter, but it has a four times more effective rate of moving people within six months into a more stable next setting. And I think we've got to change how we measure success. We've been so focused on, did you fill a bed for a night or a week? Instead of, where were they in six months? Where were they in 12 months? Where are they in two years? Have we reached a level of stability where somebody is going to be long-term set? And, and for me, I really want to make sure that we care about each of those increments and not just, did you get them off the street for a night? And, you know, tiny rest villages, I think, are incredibly promising.
Okay, thank you. And Vadim, your ideas about homelessness crisis and promise?
Yeah, you know, there's many success stories out there. Washington County is our closest neighbor. I've had success. They built out a lot of shelter beds. Megan talks about tiny villages. Those are about $220 per night for a person to stay there. If we funded tiny villages for everybody, not only would every neighborhood have to have a tiny village, but it would cost over $500 million for us to house people in those tiny villages. Some people need tiny villages or toss sites. Some people can go into congregate shelters. Washington County solved their homeless crisis by building out shelter beds in two years. They used the same tax money that we have and went from 40 shelter beds to over 400. Then they went out and they enforced their laws, which I also advocate and my opponent opposes, enforcing our laws against camping in order to get people off the streets and into those shelters. Washington County has had success, so has Salt Lake City and Boise and New Orleans. They're all doing what we're not, building out shelter beds so that people can get quickly off the streets and into services, enforcing their laws to make sure that people actually comply and do what's best for them and what's best for their health, as well as what's best for our neighborhoods. And that right there will get us to where we need to go at a much lower cost than what Megan just proposed.
Okay, Vadim, you're going to start us on. What is your assessment of the implementation of the preschool for all program so far? What steps should the county take to ensure full implementation by 2030?
So we have a lot of money sitting around that's not being utilized well. We need to build out more spaces, which we're not doing well. I have a 17-month-old daughter. She's now been in two different daycares. Both daycares said that they could not join preschool for all because it was so haphazard. They didn't understand what the policies were. One of them offered 20 spaces that they had, but because of policies that they used as to how they get people in there, the county refused, because they gave preferences for federal employees. They said, for these 20, we won't even use those preferences, and the county still said no. So we need to make sure that we have policies that work. We need to make sure we're spending the money well. My proposal is having statewide preschool for all, because our state is the most direct responsibility for schooling individuals. Our state has a much larger tax base and ability to move money around to get it done. States like California have done that without raising taxes one penny. We're in fact raising tiny taxes dramatically, making people, pricing people out of living in Multnomah, but we're not seeing the results that are expected, so we need to have better planning.
Okay, and Megan, preschool for all?
Yeah, I think that we've had a lot of success, and there are some significant challenges. I've been working on childcare policy for 20 years. I sat on the Governor's Commission for Childcare for five, and I've represented childcare providers. And the reality is, we need to make it easier for providers to join. I agree with Mr. Wazorsky on that. I do think that it is an overly bureaucratic system, and we should use some of the systems that are already in place, particularly the standards set by the Early Learning Division. But I also support subsidizing families who have been lucky enough to find care and, and helping them now. It's going to take a long time to create enough slots. But for those who are experiencing the cost of childcare now, let's provide relief. You know, we are going to get there by 2030, but we need to speed up bringing relief to more families now.
Okay, and Megan, you're going to start us on this one, which is a little bit different. So here we go. To what extent, if any, should a public officer, a public office holder be expected to model integrity in the office holder's behavior and why?
Oh, I think it's incredibly important. And I think we have seen the result at a national level of having a president who was unwilling to engage in an ethical way in office. And so now it's become commonplace to assume that you're elected off, officials are self-serving, have financial interests in where they're directing money. I think that that is totally unacceptable. I don't think it's okay to have another job. If you're a county commissioner, I think you need to do work full-time as a county commissioner. I think you need to be very transparent in where your financial interests are and what your conflict of interests are, and recuse yourself from those types of issues.
Thank you. And Vadim?
You know, our public officials have a great responsibility, and we've seen stories recently about failures in that responsibility, whether it's not paying parking tickets or what have you. We need to make sure that the people we elect are trustworthy, because they're in charge of a lot of money, and honestly, they're in charge of people's lives. So, you know, being a judge, being a lawyer, there's a lot of ethical considerations I have in my job, in my daily life. And so we need to ensure that we have that in our county government. You know, you look at even how lobbying is done at the county. The city has to register every single lobbyist that comes in and talks to an official. At the county, there's no such thing. So, you know, that's part of ethics as well. Who's influencing you? Where's the money coming from? Is your decisions based on something that is open to the public, or is it not? And I will call for at least the same standards we have at the, at the city to be implemented at the county, which is no lobbying unless you register and make sure that everything is open and transparent so that the voters know that they're getting an even deal for their vote.
And Vadim, you may find this, both of you, a little bit of a continuation, but it gives you more time. What changes in the county conflict of interest rules applicable to the commissioners, if any, would you support?
That's an excellent question. Our conflict of interest rules and laws in general are very low. Your viewers here may or may not realize it, but even if you have a financial interest in something, all you have to do before taking a vote is just say, I have a financial interest, and you can still vote on it. I think if you have a particular interest, if people that are paying your bills, if people that are giving you contributions are benefiting from your vote, you should have to report it. And I think that that's something that we need to explore at the county. As I said, the city has more stringent rules, believe it or not, than the county even does. But I think we need stringent rules still. As a federal employee, as a judge, I have to file financial statements every year explaining what kind of money I have, where it's going. I want to make sure that our elected officials are at least as responsible as normal government employees with respect to accountability and ethics.
Thank you. And Megan, conflict of interest?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Wazorsky. We have to hold ourselves to a higher level. I definitely believe in publicly declaring when you have a conflict of interest. And I think if, if you would financially benefit, you need to recuse yourself. And that should not be adoptional. You should not vote on issues in which you have a financial stake. I also believe in transparency. You know, one of the things that the Oregon Legislature does that I think should be a practice everywhere is you don't take meals, you don't get gifts over $50, and you have to report everything you've been given. I think having a culture where you don't exchange or have any kind of particularly beneficial relationship with those who have interests in front of the county is essential. I really think it improves. I was there before that in Salem, and I've been there after, and it is a massive culture change when they put in those ethics reforms. And I would strongly support seeing that at the county.
Okay, and let's switch gears again. Megan, the most recent budget for the county was more than $3.6 billion. How can you reassure the voters that your experience and education has prepared you to oversee and approve a budget of this size?
Well, I think understanding government budgeting process is an arduous but important skill. I have worked on state government budgets for nearly 20 years. And, you know, I certainly have departments in which I am much more of an expert than others. I, you know, I have a, a pretty significant expertise in Department of Human Services and the Oregon Health Authority because I've worked in those budget areas for a long time. And there are things that we need to take from the state level into the budgeting process at Multnomah, at Multnomah County. And the number one thing is we need to start having key performance measures. In the state, when you pa- when they pass budgets for each department, for every program, they tell, the legislature tells that department, here's what you're gonna measure and this is what success looks like. That doesn't exist at the county level. We need that level of accountability so that we can say, did this work? Why didn't that work? What needs to change? Is that worth the investment? I think it's time to have a higher level of transparency and accountability in the budget process.
Hey, thank you. And Vadim?
So with respect to the accountability part, um, I, I initially started my job with the federal government as a lawyer for Medicare. I worked my way all the, all the way up to being a senior policy advisor and a senior lawyer to the head of American Medicare Agency. I oversaw both budget, budgets and policies for offices, offices spread throughout the United States. I worked on the Affordable Care Act, um, and provided policy input on that. Uh, and then when I became an administrative law judge later on, I managed, uh, at one point in time, the Houston office and another point in time, the Portland office, uh, both of which had, uh, um, budgetary expenditures of over $500 million in, in benefits and, and staffing. So, uh, I've had that experience of making sure that, uh, budgets, uh, add up of actually lobbying at the, uh, not lobbying, but requesting funding from, uh, Congress in order to make sure that we had a budget that was, um, adequate. Uh, and also, we also wanna make sure we have, um, transparency. Uh, you might have heard, but, uh, the budget is developed, uh, behind closed doors at the county. And even our own commissioners don't see it until they're given hundreds of pages and they have to vote on it the next day. We wanna make sure that that process is open so that the public can see what the budget is used for, so that they can provide input so that people that are voting on the budget have time to digest it before their vote actually counts.
Hey, thank you. And Vadim? What, if any, reforms would you support in the process of electing a county commissioner?
So, uh, I, I'm actually for ranked choice voting. I, I, I'm not sure as many people are about this, uh, single transferable vote um, that the city council is going through. Uh, like many other people, I'll be eating popcorn and, and watching, see how the numbers move around. Uh, probably for a few days after the vote has actually taken place. But I think the, a kind of reform where, um, you know, uh, ranked choice voting, where you can vote for several candidates and your vote counts. I'm looking forward to that at the county. Uh, we wanna make sure that, um, there's enough, uh, uh, that people are able to get their voice out. What we're seeing a lot, right, uh, a lot right now, both Megan and I are endorsed by several people. So, uh, Megan, uh, is endorsed by public sector unions and I'm a union member, but they're gonna spend a lot of money on her campaign. And I think we need to look at that. I think we need to understand independent expenditures and, and stop that because I do not intend to take any money from independent expenditures. And I think that that, um, uh, uh, kind of, uh, puts a finger on the scale of our elections. If everybody has to limit their contributions, but then these IEs come in and spend a lot of money, um, I, I think we should take a look at that. So either raise the contribution limits or find a way to, uh, not accept those independent expenditures.
Okay, and Megan, any reforms that you would support in the election process?
Yeah, I'm surprised that Mr. Mazursky says he supports ranked choice voting. He led the effort against Portland going to ranked choice voting. So, um, yay, I'm very on that. And, um, I think it's gonna be good for Multnomah County. Um, I also don't like independent expenditures, uh, and think that it is not reflective of the voice of the candidate. Honestly, I wish that we had a system in which people, uh, controlled what was said about them, controlled what was said about their opponent. You know, I had, uh, less independent expenditure support in the primary than my opponent. I don't, no idea what support I will or won't get in the general election. But it's hard as a candidate to not be the one saying, this is how I wanna talk about myself. This is, you know, I've, I've never gone negative. I don't plan on going negative. I have no idea if anyone will or will not on my behalf. I hope they do not. Um, but I don't think it's good for democracy to, uh, have outside entities playing an uncoordinated role to spend illicit amounts of money. I don't think that's the goal.
Okay, and Megan, start us with, what role, if any, should international affairs play in the agenda of the county commission? And if so, why?
Um, I'm, I'm not 100% sure what you're asking. Um, like, should the county take positions on international issues or?
I guess any role at all in international affairs.
Well, I do think back, um, about the early efforts in the United States to end apartheid in South Africa and enroll local governments and, you know, boards of trustees by divesting in South African companies. I think that did help eventually lead the United States to, uh, change our position and be more proactive in supporting an end to apartheid. So I do think that there are roles about where counties put resources. Um, eh, but as far as where I want the county to focus our efforts, I do think it's important to make sure that we're getting the business of the people done that, that we're responsible for. And, you know, it, if there are resolutions, you know, okay, uh, I'll vote my conscience. But we can't be discussing international issues at the expense of not doing the work of the county.
Thank you. And Vadim, the role of international affairs?
Yeah, if international affairs impact Portland, I, I think the county needs to have buy-in. So when it comes to global warming, for instance, that's an international political issue, believe it or not. Uh, there's people in our very own country that don't believe in climate change and global warming. Uh, but there's certainly other, uh, countries that, uh, are not living up to the accords and are not joining in on that. I, I think if we're doing business with those countries, we should evaluate what that means, you know, are we living our values? Because global warming will be affecting us here in Portland. And, you know, we're seeing hot summers, uh, we're seeing people die from that. So we need to make sure that we, um, you know, take care of our own needs. And if those needs intersect with, uh, international politics, we wanna make sure that we're participating in that conversation, whether it's advocating for changes here at home, advocating for changes before our national leaders, um, or talking with our partners abroad about how we can make things work that will benefit them and us here at home.
You are watching the video of the voter forum of the legal women voters of Portland or you're listening to our podcast. And this is for candidates for the first district of the county commission. And we'll continue with questions to Vadim. Are you satisfied with the performance of the Joint Office of Homeless Services? If not, what changes would you pers- would you support?
Uh, I, I've been waiting for this question. I, uh, this is, I'm very dissatisfied with them. And that's a key plank of my, uh, race here is talking about how the Joint Office of Homeless is failing. The budget this year, uh, for anybody that doesn't know is $400 million to address homelessness. And yet every year, we have more and more people living in our streets. We have more and more people dying, more overdoses, more murders in the streets. Um, overdoses have gone up 500%, murders on the streets have gone up 650%. And the budget is almost 10 times more what it was just seven years ago. We're failing. We're not, we don't have the metrics in place. On day one in office or in the first meeting that I have, um, as a next county commissioner, I will ask for an audit, a forensic, um, a- as well as a performance audit of the Joint Office of Homeless Services. We need to make sure that we know how the money's being spent, what's working, what's not. Um, make sure that all the people that we contract with, all the organizations we contract with are working together on the same page um, in order to have success. We're not doing any of that. Uh, basically, the goal is to move money out the door as quickly as possible. The goal should be making sure that money is being used as effectively as possible.
Thank you. Megan, homeless services?
I, uh, share. Mr. Mazursky's criticism of the Joint Office of Homelessness. I think it is fundamentally failed. And if we cannot get the Joint Office to get to a place where both the city and the county are equally bought in to an actual actionable, accountable and measurable plan to address homelessness, I don't really understand the continuation. Because what I have seen happen is it has become a forum for, for, uh, blaming the other. And, and I think that that is counterproductive. I think there is a lack of clarity in the Joint Office of who is responsible for what. There is a lack of mutual commitment on how we measure success. And I really fundamentally question, if we cannot be on the same page about those things, is it really the best way to address these issues? Now, I do hope with a new ca- set of county commissioners and a new city government, that it is an opportunity for a reset. But if we can't get on the same page, I think we need to question the continuation of the office.
Okay, and Megan, next question. What if any changes in the county's policies concerning addiction, treatment and recovery would you support?
Well, I support building a Medicaid-funded comprehensive system, which does not exist. You know, right now, we have a variety, not enough, of individual services. But we don't actually have a system that helps people move successfully through treatment. And that has to be addressed. Now, the county is the local mental health authority, but we are in partnership. We are in partnership with the state and the health authority. We are in partnership with our Medicaid insurance companies called CCOs. And we need to have clarity about who provides what. We have all pointed fingers for decades saying, oh, that's not my job or there's not enough funding or, or we can't do this. And we are seeing the results today. We have got to evaluate and the health authority finally came out with a list of what they think the unmet needs are by region. We need to use that as a blueprint and actively have a plan of how we get the capacity online so that we can be able to serve people on demand.
Thank you. And Vadim?
And, and the question was about, uh, drug addiction policies, is that correct?
Yeah, it was concerning addiction treatment and recovery. What changes?
Yeah, so this is where, um, obviously my opponent and I have, uh, um, a difference of, uh, perspective. My opponent says we need more money. I say we need to use more money better. We don't need more money for more pol- uh, more services. We need more money. We need the money to be used better. Uh, right now, uh, we don't have a sobering center, even though 2019, the last one closed down. The county's gone through two different reports about how to set it up. Washington County is now breaking ground, is already building a sobering center that they funded with a private-public partnership in order to make it happen. We're not even doing that much. We need to get people to services, whether it's homeless people off the streets in the shelters where they can get services or people with drug addiction problems into, uh, continuum of care. And that sobering center is a part of that continuum of care. Uh, or, you know, once again, around detox and transitional housing, the, the county is failing us. Um, we, uh, have the ability to quickly build up detox centers. We're, we're not doing that. We have the ability to partner with private organizations to build out transitional housing. So when people go through detox, they're not back on the streets. Our county, believe it or not, is not working on that. We need to change those policies and make it work, not ask for more money.
Okay, and Vadim? Explain how you would approach approval or disapproval of legal settlements of claims against the county.
Thank you. So, um, uh, we need to make sure that, uh, you know, being a lawyer, um, uh, we need to have an opinion that's external, um, that allows us to, uh, know what the issues are. Because, uh, part of this is that conflict of interest. Um, when, when you're settling something, um, it has to be an outside source or an impartial source that takes a look at that settlement and makes sure that our money is being put to good use um, and not be influenced in any sort of political way. Um, once again, being a lawyer, being a judge, I, I'll be able to make that happen.
And Megan?
Well, I think you're referring, I could be wrong, to an issue that the county had that in fact the Oregon Legislature intervened on, which had to do with when somebody's property was, um, foreclosed by the county for unpaid taxes. It was the practice of the county to then sell that property and take all of the profit regardless of if it exceeded the amount owed, which I could not believe when I found out that was happening. I was totally shocked. I didn't think that was legal and it probably wasn't. But, uh, but that has been addressed. The fact that that is a practice or was ever a practice of Multnomah County is shocking to me. You know, I, I believe in fairness. I believe people need to pay their taxes. But, uh, but I definitely believe in treating people with their respect and the dignity they deserve. Now, if somebody is losing a piece of property to unpaid property tax, they are probably in an economic crisis. And to then take their profits from the sale of that property above what is owed is really unconscionable to me. And I think we've had a look at the practices of the county. If that's a past practice, what else are we doing?
Okay, um, we're gonna switch gears a little bit again, Megan. What individuals or entities have contributed the most money to your campaign?
Um, well, money I can actually accept into my pack of, uh, $568 probably my family, honestly, uh, definitely coworkers, uh, and former colleagues. But, um, but probably the majority have a last name lawyer. Um, I, I do think that there are independent expenditures on my behalf. I don't know how much that has been raised, like, I couldn't say. Um, but, but in my, to my campaign, that I see those dollars, it is probably friends, colleagues and, and family members.
Okay, and Vadim?
Yeah, this is all online for everybody, um, on Orstar. You can take a look exactly who's contributing to whom and how much. You know, you took a look at my opponent and it's, uh, politicians that have contributed quite a bit, who have endorsed her, but also given her money and also political action committees, um, that have given her money. Uh, there's a $568 limit, but nonetheless, organizations. Uh, you take a look at my campaign and it's a bunch of people, you know, I looked at how many contributions came in today. 50 from somebody, 100 from somebody else, 150. That's because I was at a meeting yesterday, uh, talking to individuals and they bought into the message about change and they're contributing individually. Most of my contributions have come from people, not politicians and organizations.
And we're gonna switch gears again, Vadim. Are you satisfied with the board's current administration of animal services? Why or why not? And if not, what changes would you support?
Um, okay, I'm, I'm not satisfied at all. What we've seen right now is a lack of accountability, uh, animals being euthanized. That should not be, um, we need to make sure that we change it around. Um, as far as I know, uh, Portland is one of the highest, uh, um, number of pets per, uh, uh, population in the country. People care about those animals. Our county is failing us. Uh, Sharon Myron has said our county is failing us on this. We need to make sure that, uh, there's, once again, we use these terms accountability pretty openly, but it's about planning. It's making sure that we have, uh, standards in place, metrics in place, and that we pay attention. We shouldn't be waiting until a reporter writes a story. We should be out there listening and if, uh, making sure that the resources are met and making sure that our beloved animals are taken care of.
Megan, animal services?
Yeah, I think what has happened at animal services is like a canary in the coal mine. I had the opportunity to meet with some workers in animal services who talked about how they had made the county higher-ups of, uh, aware of what was going on and were ignored for months and months and months. The same thing happened at the jail where county workers were saying, this is for management. People were quitting en masse and, and nothing was done. I absolutely believe we have a management problem at the county. And I think we're not listening to frontline workers when they're waving red flags to the detriment of the services of this county. I don't think we're 100% there. I think we've had some improvement in animal services. I think the same thing about the jail. But I really question a culture in which people are waving flags, saying, things are way off base here and it's being ignored by the higher-ups.
Hey, that, again, a different switch. Hey, that'd be, again, a different switch here, Megan. What are the attributes of an outstanding commission chair?
Well, I think building consensus is the sign, the sign of an excellent chair. I also think when you're the chief administrator, being able to delegate and trust those who are running your departments to execute on what you and the, the commission have decided is the roadmap is essential. I don't think we have that right now. I think we have a chair who keeps a lot of decision-making and a lot of very detailed related work at the chair and advisor level that really needs to be at a department level. I also think that an effective chair is building consensus and taking public input before making decisions. And I don't think that's what we've got right now. And we desperately need to open up our process to greater input and greater transparency.
Thank you. And Vadim? Attributes of the chair?
The, the chair has to build bridges. And that entails not only within the county commission, but with the city and the state. We're seeing a breakdown in that. So the mayor is very critical of the county chair, especially around homelessness, saying that the city constituency has people who live here, people who work here, people who visit here, homeless people, neighborhoods. The constituency of the county commission is apparently just homeless people. We shouldn't have that discord. We should be on the same page and building bridges is part of that. And then openness. What we're seeing in the, in the Buckman neighborhood, for instance, where this deflection center was, is scheduled to be built. You know, the, the lease was signed, then people in the Buckman neighborhood were told about it. Then the county commissioner for District One, which includes Buckman, was informed about it. That's totally backwards. We need to involve people. We need to let them know and have a voice in how their money's spent in the decision-making. And we see that on the local public safety coordinating council, where things are done in secret. We're seeing that up and down. We should not have secrecy be a part of the MO of our county chair.
Okay. And Vadim, and for both of you, this is the last question, so you can breathe a little bit. The city of Portland and the county have many overlapping or shared responsibilities, such as transportation, public safety, and the issues of homelessness. How would you encourage effective cooperation between these two governments?
And I'm already doing that. This is where experience matters. So if you look at my website, I'm endorsed by Keith Wilson. And that's because, you know, Keith Wilson's running for mayor, and that's because I've worked with him on homelessness issues. I'm endorsed by Renee Gonzalez, because I've worked with him on public safety issues. I'm endorsed by Mingus Maps, because I've worked with him on the past on some of the charter stuff and also 911 services. I built those bridges over time that will be useful when I'm working on the county commission, working with the city. I'm endorsed by numerous city council candidates from around the city, not because they think it'll help them or what have you, but because we build that relationship, that trust over a long period of time. And I will continue building that trust in the county commission. We have to work together. The city is spending a lot of money due to the failures of, of the county. So where the county is responsible for homelessness and has a budget of $400 million, the city spends about $300 million on, on fixing the problems that the county has created. If the county does its job, then the city can spend money on fixing potholes, on building sidewalks, on paving roads, those things that the city should do, but for the failure of the county. And I'll change that.
Okay. And Megan, the two governments coming together?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's interesting. I just got attacked for being supported by elected officials. And you just listed the elected officials who support him. You know, I think we both have really significant relationships and have worked with lots of different leaders in, in our community. I definitely feel like we have to get to a much more functional place. I am really optimistic about the change the city's going to have and the change that the county is going to have. But one of the things that I think has to happen is a shared vision of what do we want for our community, which right now, we don't have. I'm going to be honest. I don't think our chair and our mayor share the same vision. And that's problematic for coordinating services. And, you know, I am very hopeful. I obviously have, have my personal hopes of who I see get elected and I'll vote that way. But I, I think we have to take this opportunity to build bridges. And I think we have to appreciate the unique roles of the county versus the city. I'm running for the county because I'm an expert at the type of services the county delivers. You know, if I wanted to run for the city and I cared about those issues, and I do care, but had passion for it, I would have run for the city. But I think we have got to bring together the city and the county and the other cities of this county, because it is not just Portland, to be on the same page of how we're addressing these systemic issues.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to both of you for not only being part of this forum, but in fact for running. It shows your interest and commitment to government. So we move now to the closing statements. And Megan, you're going to get us started with the first one.
Sure, I think this is a really unique time in, in our local government. And it is a time to expect more than just a good vote from an elected official. We need people who can roll up their sleeves and really address these issues. And the way that we should decide who those people are is to look at what they have done. For 20 years, I've worked in Oregon to improve services for people with disabilities, people with mental illness, children. Please check me out. Go to MeganForMultnomah.org. Look at what I've worked on. Look at what I have accomplished and say, who can I vote for? Who's going to actually be able to make the change? It is not enough to just talk to people. It's not enough to be able to say that I went to a meeting. What have you done? What changes have you helped make that is a clear indicator of who you will be as an elected official? Thank you.
Thank you. And Vadim, your closing statement, please.
Well, thank you, Linda. Thank you, League of Women's Voters. And thank you, everyone that's actually watched this whole debate. I think it's very important, your vote matters. We're at a pivotal time and I think it's very important that we elect officials with experience who will be effective. I have that demonstrated experience. I've worked on nationwide policies. I've worked on the Affordable Care Act that has brought healthcare to millions of people that would otherwise not have it. I've managed large offices, large bureaucracies. I'm a union member, but I've also been in management and I've gotten things done. Whereas my opponent says, we just need more money for more services. I actually have the plans in order to make it happen. I've talked to individuals, whether it be the people who run Bybee Lakes or city teams, hope for the homeless, about what that would look like, how we solve things. And so we can work together to get things done. But that's the point. We need to work together. We need to build that trust and we need effectiveness. So let's not talk about more money and down the road, we'll have more services. Let's get it done now. And I'm the candidate that'll get it done now.
Thank you. This concludes today's forum with the candidates for the first district of the county commission. We thank, and I specifically do, for your participation. Please share this forum recording and podcast with your family and friends, because we all need to be informed voters. If you're registered to vote by October 15th, you should receive your ballot by October 22nd. As with all Oregon elections, almost all voters will participate by mailing in their ballots only, although in-person voting is available. Check your Multnomah County Voters pamphlet online, or when the paper copy arrives by email at your household. To be counted, ballots must be postmarked by Tuesday, November 5th at 8:00 PM. You can also find an official ballot Dropbox location near you by checking www.vot411.org or in the county voters pamphlet. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit membership organization. We hope this forum was meaningful to you. We welcome you to join or contribute at L W V P D X dot org. This is Linda Mather for the League of Women Voters of Portland. Thank you for watching and listening and taking the time to be an informed voter. And remember, your vote counts. Thank you.